Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the public hearing on the proposed 2013-2014 budget. For those of you here in the courtroom and for those watching on Channel 19, we appreciate your interest in the budget process. Thank you very much. I would like to introduce the people who have had an instrumental part in putting this budget together. Our mayor, Ernest Burgess, is in the audience. Our finance director, Lisa Nolan. Our deputy finance director, Elaine Short. Mayor Burgess and Mrs. Nolan have spent weeks working with department heads crafting this proposal, and one of the important components of this process is to document the budget process, and one very specific, among many other responsibilities of Ms. Short, is that documentation. The members of the Budget Committee are Commissioner Charlie Baum, Commissioner Joe Frank Jernigan, Commissioner Will Jordan, who serves as vice chair, Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Steve Sandlin, and Commissioner Doug Schaefer. I'm Joyce Ely, and I presently serve as the chairperson. We do have some other county commissioners in attendance tonight, and thank you for your attendance. We have Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Coggan, Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Serino, Commissioner Cook, and Commissioner Stevens. Mayor Burgess makes a recommendation on 20.84 percent of the budget, and that includes the general fund, solid waste sanitation fund, the ambulance service fund, special purpose fund, the drug fund, and the industrial development fund. The county mayor does not make a recommendation on the debt service fund. A motion comes from the Budget Finance and Investment Committee for that fund, and that fund is a little bit more than 10 percent of our entire budget. The county mayor does not make a recommendation on the highway fund. That budget is sent to us from the road board, which is an elected board. The county mayor does not make a recommendation on the general purpose school fund, the cafeteria fund, and the education capital projects fund. Those three budgets are sent to us from an elected school board, and those three budgets make up about 79 percent of our budget. The Budget Finance and Investment Committee has spent weeks, along with input from the department heads, reviewing this proposed budget. All meetings have been televised on Channel 19. Our budget has been published in the newspaper, and all details of all budgets can be seen in the finance office at your convenience. The proposal as presented tonight is the work of the Budget Committee to date. It reflects the work that we have done to date. It is our recommendation, and our finance director tonight will present an overview of the budget, and then after her presentation, we will listen to your comments. I understand that some little cards have been passed out for you to fill out if you would anticipate speaking. That is just to help us with our public record, so if you will have that, and I will inform you how to give us that information at the proper time. Mrs. Nolan?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ely. Before I get started, I'd kind of like to touch on just a couple of things before we talk about the budget. We've had several speakers along the year, and recently, a lot of discussion about how much cash the county has, and where's that cash, and what about those investments, and what about those CDs? So, I'd like to talk about two different offices, the county trustee and my office, the finance office. I'd like to explain to you that the county trustee, Mr. Ted Beatty, is responsible, what the responsibility is in the trustee's office, and how it's different from mine. He is responsible for implementing the tax freeze and the tax relief programs. He's responsible for collecting all the monies due to the county, and he is responsible for investing those monies and having those monies available to be able to pay the warrants and the bills that are presented to him. The finance office on the other side, let me just go back on these investments. He's charged with investing the monies wisely and conservatively. Also, there are policies in place, and state statutes in place, that limit how he can invest those monies. So that is one office, one responsibility, managing the cash. Now, that's different from the finance office, so what is our responsibility? The finance department, we're responsible for administering the budget adopted by the commission. We're charged with making sure that nobody overspends a line item, and making sure that all the expenses are spent the way it was allocated. We also ensure compliance with the financial policies adopted by this commission. We're responsible for maintaining the books and records, and of course, we're generally accepted accounting principles. Now, those of you who are not accountants, that just means the way we account for our expenses and our revenues is consistently applied, and that if you pick up the audit from Rutherford County, you should be able to pick up the audit from Coffee County, Warren County, any county around us, and know that those things have been accounted for the same way, and that our books and records are comparable. My office, we have centralized accounting in the county, and my office pays all the bills and all the salaries for the schools, the county, and the highway department. My office receipts the cash along with the trustee, and we have a reconcile. We reconcile between our two departments to make sure that the cash that is recorded is the cash what gets deposited. The other item that we do is we inventory all the fixed assets of the county and record that. So, I hope you can understand that there's comments that the county takes money for the budget and invests it, and that that's a bad thing. I just want you to understand, it's two separate functions. Where the cash is while it's being held prior to us presenting to the trustee, we've paid these bills, you better make sure that there's money available in the account to pay them. Okay, and here's a little bit on accounting primer. Now, those that are bookkeepers and counts, you kind of get this, but I just kind of, it seems like there is a misunderstanding when we talk about monies that are available. Balance sheet is a point in time. It is one day. On the balance sheet, we show our assets, which is our cash receivables, minus our liabilities, which is our payables, equals what's left over, is what assets minus liabilities is fund balance, what is left over. But that fund balance has got components in it. There are monies that the county receives that are restricted in nature. It's either restricted by a legal requirement, for example, it's monies that are taken in from the courts for victim assistance. We have the cash, but I can't spend it for agriculture. It can only be spent for the domestic violence program. So, any monies that are setting aside in excess of those expenses, we have to set aside and fund balance. So, you see cash, that doesn't mean that it can all be spent. You'll see a commitment of fund balance. The commitments for us are those balances that are set aside. We've issued a purchase order. We don't have the product. We haven't paid the bill, but there will be one coming. We've committed, we've made an order. So, the committed fund balance, the cash is there, but we can't spend it because we've already issued a purchase against those funds. So, that's your committed fund balance, can't spend that. Our focus is on the unassigned fund balance. That's the amount that over years, revenues have come in that exceeded the fund balance. They're not restricted. It's available to spend. So, every year, these monies, where the revenues exceed our expenses, will flow into fund balance. They do not get hidden away. They are discussed every year at this time, because part of our discussions in setting a budget is understanding what are available balances that we are projecting at the end of this fiscal year that might be available to use next year. So, just be listening for that unassigned fund balance, because that's a key for us. Now, this cash on hand, this is just a silly slide, but it's really for us no different. When you've taken that point in time, it's no different from Dad coming home with his paycheck in cash, and Junior going, "Oh, wow, Dad, you've got lots of money. Let's go on vacation. Buy me a bike." Well, no, we've got bills to pay this week, we've got to pay groceries, we've got things coming. So, just because the cash is on hand at a specific day does not mean that all that cash is available to be spent. Again, we get back down to, after all the accounting, what is the unassigned fund balance that's important to us? You see assignments of fund balance. Those are assignments to separate funds. The monies have come in and are designated for a specific purpose. For example, our solid waste fund. Those monies are designated by the state. That's one fund designated by the state that has to be handled separately. Those monies are specific for that. It comes in, and it's assigned for that. No different from the highway department. The monies come in, it's specific for highway. Okay, so there's my, sorry, that probably went a little longer than I intended to, so I just kind of want to get my three cents in, okay? All right, so let's go talk about the next year's budget, and I am so glad to see everybody here. You do all this work, and it's really sad when nobody shows up, so I really appreciate everybody in the audience who's taken their time to come today. We're going to start out, we're going to look at the county's budget overall. We're going to look at everything at a global level, and then we'll drill down into the separate funds, only on the major funds, though I won't bore you on all the funds. The end of the story is that the Budget and Finance Committee currently is recommending a 10 cent increase. That's five cents for the county general and five cents for schools. But to help make this budget work, we're also recommending moving two and a half cents from the ambulance fund, point one cent from the highway fund, and, yeah, those moved into the general fund, and one cent from the debt service, moving those monies. Counties are a little different from cities in that when we set a tax rate, we have to specifically set where those monies are going to come from. When the commission adopts the appropriation resolution and the tax levy, those funds become restricted revenues. They are restricted for the purpose in which we levy the tax. The only way to change that is through this tax levy. Okay. Let's get this thing moving. There you go. So, on a visual, where is most of the tax, the current property tax, being allocated? As you can see, if you can follow the arrow, most of it is for education. We've got education capital projects that were set up several years ago specifically for improvements of buildings with the schools. You've got over, gosh, how many schools, are we 40 schools now? That it's money set aside for repairs of buildings. Debt service, this is the money that, you know, I keep looking at our, to me, our county budget is our big family budget. All of us that live in Rutherford County, this is our family budget. This is our mortgage payments. This is where we pay the payments for the schools that we've borrowed the money to build, schools and other county buildings. But about 85 percent of the debt service is for schools. So, when people start complaining about how much our debt is, look around you, and you see buildings. The only time that the county borrows money is for building schools, or county buildings, or land. We amortize our debt over 20 years. Our buildings are going to last 40 or 50 years. Now, right now, we are scheduled to pay over 60 percent of our debt, it's going to be paid off in 10 years, and we watch that. That's a good marker for us. We want to be able to say that we pay over half our debt in 10 years. So, just feel good that, you know, that we're paying off an asset that's still going to be used after it's paid for. Okay, so keep talking about this current levy, because that's what we're all interested in, and how much money is that going to generate? The tax levy at $2.5652 cents in total, after setting aside monies for delinquency, because what we, on this number, is trying to project what is actually going to be in the county coffers by June 30 next year. So, we'll eventually get these delinquencies. It may take us a year or two, but we'll get them. Other tax rate, I'll show you right there. The estimates have that we will receive 150 million, that's where I'm trying to get you to, 150 million, 502,000. Of that number, because the city schools, the cities have a city school system that educates K through six, counties are responsible for educating all children. So, any monies that come in, excuse me, any monies that come in for education has to be split with the city school system. Property tax being one of them, and it is based on the average daily attendance of the kids. City of Murfreesboro educates about 15 percent of all the children. With this estimate of the education, the property tax for education, that's for education and education capital projects, they will get a share, and their share is estimated at 10,387,000. That equates to about 17.7 cents of the property tax rate. So, the county doesn't really not receive the full $2.56. But what is available for Rutherford County is 140 million dollars, sorry, 140, 114. Now, all of you that own property realize that when the commission levy this tax, they'll levy the tax rate in June. These taxes are not due until October 1. And all of you in here, pay the county trustee. Those funds, people that start paying, some people do pay their bills as soon as they get it, but the majority, I'll say the majority, pay before or during that month of December so that they can account for it on their taxes, their IRS taxes. But as the monies come into the trustee's account, they're not available to be spent until the first day of the next month. I'm just telling you this so that you realize that a lot of our budget is based on the current property tax, but it doesn't come in until much later. When we talk about pennies, and I've had several people, you know, they'd say 10 cents, they hear us say that we need 10 cents. I've had lots of dimes offered to me, but that's not what I mean, or what we mean. We all drill down to what does one cent on the tax rate generate for the county. We talk about school pennies and general fund pennies. The school pennies, as I said before, the property tax for education is split between the two systems. So, a school penny already calculates the amount that will go to the city of Murfreesboro. So, currently, a general fund penny, which is the full penny, is about 586,000. That's a .3 increase over the penny rate that we budgeted the current year on. Because of the ADA with the kids, the county kids increased more than the city kids, so the school penny got a little higher. So, it increased at 1.8 percent, so it's up to 500, almost 503,000. So, still, on a global view, where does the money come from that funds the county budget? 30 percent of it is that current levy. 41 percent of it is from the state, and you'll see later that that really is for education mostly. Other revenue, other local revenues, 11 percent. Other local taxes is 15 percent. The federal government provides 3 percent of our budget. Again, global view, you can see the current property tax at 30. Other county property tax, and that's tax coming from the trustee, coming from the chance rate, it's all related to property tax. Local sales tax, and I know, nine plus zero, doesn't look like it adds to 10, but it's really nine and a half and a half on how that comes in. So, the local, for education, is, the schools are going to receive half of the local portion to fund education. Again, that's split between the two school systems. This local tax, non-education, is, that's the estimate for the sales tax that's generated in the rural area. That sales tax is used to fund the county general, solid waste, and highway. So, you can quickly see down. State revenue, 186 million dollars. Again, most of that is going to education. So, where is it going? Where all this money going? The county general budget makes up 17, a little over 17 percent of the entire budget. County schools, with debt included, makes up over 75 percent of our budget. Debt service in total, about 10 and a half percent of our budget. So, here's the total numbers for you. Total estimated revenue for all funds is estimated at 460,207,000. Appropriations, meaning what is the budget set for next year in all these funds, is We have a shortfall of about, now, understand that these numbers that I've given you already include the estimate for the additional 10 cents. Five for county general, five for the debt service, I mean, five for schools. But we're short 21 million dollars. Remember us talking about an assigned fund balance? This is where we're estimating. It's an estimate. What do we think we're going to close at? In total, we're estimating 91 million dollars that will close at the end of this year. 21 million of it we're going to use to fund next year's balances. Now, remember I was telling you about those policies that this commission has adopted? We also have state policies. Now, the commission has adopted that we will have a minimum of 15 percent in our general fund. We'll make sure, and I say 15 percent, it's 15 percent of appropriations, is what we should have in our fund balance. As presented, our fund balance is estimated at 15.8. Again, that's the minimum. We're saying that we don't need to be below 15 percent. The state requires that schools maintain a 3 percent. And our debt service, when our next one is centralized cafeteria, this one is a little different. This is a fund that the state says, state or federal, you can't have more than 25 percent. There's a cap on this fund. You can't have more than 25. If you do, you've got to spend that money in the cafeterias, and that's what the school board does. They use these funds to help with equipment and renovating cafeterias and their programs. Debt service, again, it's a calculation, and it's based on budget contingencies, emergency contingencies, most of the, another requirement is that we have to look out five years on a capital plan to see what are the things that are coming down the pike, and what should the balances be to take care of us in the future, because we already know that these things are going to be coming, or it's planned to come. So, now, we're going to start drilling down. We're going to start talking about individual funds now. In the general fund, as I said earlier, 82,880,000 dollars. It's broken out to your major categories. Over half our budget is for public safety, followed by general operations and finance. But public safety is not just the sheriff operations in the jail. It also includes the juvenile detention, the work center, building codes, EMA, and Royal Fire. So, when you wrap all that up, that's why our general fund, most of it, well, is public safety, or over half. So, the significant items in the general fund, we've, and this is the second phase of the HR recommendation on the salary plan. It includes expanded grades. We've gone from 14 grades to 54, and this is based on a 2011 salary survey. The recommendation is to eliminate three full-time and two part-time, and add 23.3 positions. Three of those are funded by a grant or contract. This includes 13 new SROs, the training and their equipment, and transfers three positions from our drug fund into the general fund. It includes the increases to health insurance, includes sheriff's vehicles at 1,560,000. And again, just reminding you of that reliance on the unassigned fund balance of 2.9 million. Now, this is where we're talking about our policy. On one side, you've got money in, and where's the money coming in? For the general fund. A little less than half is funded by that current levy, of which, I've already told you, comes in much later. It's not available right off the bat. Our excess fees, half of this comes in quarterly. That's 13 percent of our budget that we get quarterly. The first one doesn't come until October. The other taxes, the other local tax, and the other items do come in on a monthly basis. But the problem is, we're a government, we provide service, and it's people that provide those services. 64 percent of the general fund budget is salary and benefits that begin to be paid out in July. So, what is our 15 percent fund balance? Again, that's a minimum. We don't want to drop below 15 percent, but what is that saying? That's saying that we, our minimum is 7.8 weeks of appropriations is what we're going to try to hold back. As I said before, we need it for cash flow. Budgets are based on estimates, so if there are estimates, there's a contingency, it's there. We all live in this Tennessee. We know what happens in this time of year, you know? So, you need a contingency for disasters too. With the appropriations that we've set, that equates to 12.4 million. That's the minimum of what we need. Moving on to schools. General purpose schools is a general operating fund for the school system. That budget is set at 300 million dollars. The centralized cafeteria, now, this is where you're going to get the funds from the federal government that helps support that program. Total appropriations at 19,89,000. And then the education capital projects fund, that's where we allocate a portion of that property tax for our school buildings, and that's about 2 and 1/2 million. The major items in this budget, it's 7 percent increase over last year's, or the current year's amended budget. But we're open in Stewart's Creek School. We're adding 131.8 positions. There is a 1 and 1/2 percent increase to their base table, and their steps are included. And the insurance premiums, again, are included, the ones that we've adopted and approved for 2014. Now, in these budgets, when we are adopting premiums, that is for a calendar year, so only one half of the increase of insurance premiums for schools is reflected in the 13-14 budget. Schools have already estimated, I've got 2.750, I think it's a little more than that, that will already come into the 14-15 budget. So, how are we going to take care of the schools? We're proposing a 5 cent increase that will provide about 2 and 1/2 million dollars. Increase in sales tax estimate that will provide 2.7 million. And the state revenue has increased 12.7 million to the BEP. We're still going to be relying on the unassigned fund balance of 10.8 million. We're still going to be relying on the unassigned fund balance of 10.8 million. Now, if you wanted to balance that, that's the equivalent of 21 cents that we are using the fund balance, didn't go into a black hole, that we're using next year to offset a need for a tax, for additional 21-cent tax increase. Schools revenue, kind of picture, 61% of the schools' budget is funded by the state. The state pays this beginning in September, by 10 payments, beginning in September. Now, you remember that cash balance that you had reported to you of what we had in the schools as of June 30th? Many of the teachers' contracts are for 10 months, but teachers choose to be paid over 12. So those amounts that we, that are, that's sitting in our cash is going to be spent on those teachers' contracts in July and August. Sitting in our cash, it looks very nice, there's good cash balances, but the teachers are going to be paid in July and August. Their new contract starts in September. The current levy for schools is 21%, and I've already explained to you how that comes The school improvement fund, these are the items that the school board has projected into next year, the things that they'd like to accomplish. The majority of the money will be used for Blackman High School, for their re-roofing project. It just seems like we just opened Blackman. The other items are paving projects for Christiana Middle, Laverne Middle, Oakland High School, and Stewart's Borough Elementary. We've got window projects at the Central Annex in Buchanan, and sewer projects, Buchanan and Eagle Bowl. Debt service, we've spoken about. In total, $50,482,000. This refunded bond in the escrow, that is where we have refinanced, refunded, your terms would be refinanced, in order to achieve a lower interest rate. We've done this four times, and we've saved over $15 million. So the items, I'm going to give you how much that we owe, starting with the current year. The first day, we had $379,000, 345,000. During the current year, we issued 65.7 million in debt, but we refunded 64.9 million, and we retired 24.6 million. So our estimated ending balance at the end of this fiscal year, beginning next fiscal year, is $355,495. We're projecting to pay off, or not projecting, we are scheduled to pay off, $25,345,000. Now, in this slide, I'm showing you that our ending outstanding debt is $330 million. Now, what is not reflected at this moment is the anticipated borrowing that we will do either in the fall or the spring for the expansion at Blackman Middle, and that's So in total, for the road fund, their estimate, their appropriations for next year is $9,379,000. And you can see that that is a reduction from the current year. Now, for those employees, the HR department has worked with those, with those folks and evaluated their employees, and have used the expanded table in their budget. They also show a reduction of four employees' positions. Sorry. So that's overall summary of all our funds. That concludes the overview, and I turn it over to Ms. Ely for your comments.
It's your time to speak, and I will tell you, this is not a question-and-answer time. This is a public hearing. We are here to listen to your comments. I would ask you, please, to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and if you will help by honoring a three-minute limit to your comments. If you do not feel that you have adequate time to express your opinions after we have given everyone a chance to speak, if you would like to come back around the second time, we will certainly have time to do that. But you will notice that on the podium, there are some signals to let you know your time limit. So I would ask you to respectfully honor that, and we'll give as many people time to speak as want to speak. So we will begin. If the first person who wants to speak will come, give your name and your address, and you are limited to three minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Robert Stevens, and my address is 137 Laurel Hill Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee, 37167. My comments tonight are made as an absolute outsider to this budget, no conflicts of interest, no personal connections, no family members who work for the county, and I'm not on the health insurance plan. This is strictly an objective speech. And I approach this budget and all the votes that we make with these two questions in mind. Is this a good business decision, and is this the best we can offer our constituents? Now, some of the things that I'm going to talk about are issues that will be controversial and that we need to work on in the future, and it's harder to cover this in three minutes. But health insurance, pensions, and debt are what brought down cities in California, and if we don't make some changes to our pension system and our health insurance plan, we're going to be on the same track. So I've added up every line item in our budget proposal today, and for health insurance, state retirement, life insurance, the total is about $73 million, and that's unsustainable. We can't afford to keep doing this. The liabilities are continuing to mushroom. The state treasurer has said that seven local government entities have pulled out of the pension system because it's insolvent, and we're going to have to start showing these accrued liabilities on our balance sheets, and that's going to affect our bond rating. We've got to end the pensions for all new hires and go to a 401K like everybody in the private sector has. Instead of paying 12.5 cents for every dollar of payroll into a state pension system, we need to do a 4%, 401K match, and that'll save us a fortune over time. I would also recommend that we go back and reconsider the health insurance rates that we passed recently. Almost 90% is paid by the county for the employee share, and we also pay almost 90% for the spouse's share, and that is, that's a killer. We need to get spouses off our plan. Unfortunately, with the new federal healthcare law that's in effect, we've got to play by their rules. They say that we don't have to cover spouses. We need to make it an incentive for the spouse to go to their own health insurance plan at work or to get a private policy. So it might be good to look at going to a 50-50 split with the spouse. This will save us a fortune, and it'll get us out of paying that $65 federal healthcare tax on those people. Also, I think we need to look at reducing the amount we have in the debt service fund from 65% to 50%. This is very complex, but I think that'll free up some cash. If something happens that we need 65% to pay our bills, we're in big trouble anyway. I don't know, but it's going to matter that much. I would recommend scrapping the expanded pay scales. That's going to cost us $800,000. I would also recommend that we remove the 11 new SRO positions from the budget. Each elementary school already has an SRO that is split with another school, and that'll save us $734,000. I would recommend that the two sheriff's office positions that are being absorbed in the sheriff's fund be, become the two SROs for the Stewart's Creek School, and have some other things, too, and I might be able to stay, to share those with you.
Good evening. My name is Philip Byer. I'm at, I live at 1202 Sam Davis in Smyrna, Tennessee. So y'all know what already happened in Smyrna. We got hit with 20% tax increase. It would have been 46%, but thank God, a lot of citizens rose up and tried to reduce it. Folks, y'all know that the private citizen, the private sector that pays all of the bills, pays all of those numbers up there, are being burdened from not only small towns, cities, counties, state, federal. We're working over a half a year to pay these bills. See, y'all don't, you don't say, hey, we're going to grow or have a little tax increase. You're wanting more and more of a pie. The pie is getting smaller and smaller for the private sector. There's hardly no such thing anymore is private property. Do y'all understand that, what I mean here? Private property is being taken away by the government. If you pay off your property and you retire, what happens when the government keeps taking more and more and more of the pie? You're going to have to pay these bills when you don't have, you're living on a fixed income. Now, there's people in this audience here that work for the county, and you're in the budget committee voting on your own healthcare and your spouses. That's not right. That's not right. My business, we had to cut not only salaries, we had to cut benefits. We went to paying half of the employees' health benefits, down to paying zero, and that was over four years ago, and we haven't got that back yet. We just barely now got them back to their salaries that they were paying four and five years ago. Folks, we need to be good stewards. We need to be good stewards over the, over the private sector's money, the people who pay the bill. You know, when Rutherford County was one of the fastest-growing counties in America, money was just being poured in, poured in. So they raised, they, new vehicles for everybody, pensions for the spouses, new school buildings. But now that the money's not pouring in, they want to live at that same level. They want to live right up there again, and they're going to ask for more and more of your money. Good evening.
I live at 15, well, I don't live there yet, but that's where my address is, 1546 Georgetown Lane. I own two houses right now, so, you know, this is concerning me. But, you know, I think about how, I just got back, I went and saw my parents up in Kentucky, and in Kentucky, they tax everything that moves up there. And because of that, business is no longer moving there. And when you hear the governor, he brags about how all these businesses are moving here to Tennessee, where they're moving to where they can pay lower taxes. Well, Rutherford County already pays one of the highest tax rates in the state. We actually pay more than all of our surrounding counties, except for Davidson. And so where do you think these new businesses are going to go? Well, they go to Williamson County, right? That's where everything seems to go. And Williamson County gets to pay less and less taxes because they keep their taxes low. The issue here is taxes are very inefficient, and when you raise taxes, it takes money out of the private sector. So every time you raise a tax, you're taking it out of the private sector, and therefore, it's not being spent locally. And so there makes no more sense for you to put a business here, because then it moves to another county where they're paying less in taxes. Finally, like Robert was saying earlier, and the last gentleman as well, this is basically just a stopgap plan. I mean, we can see what's going to happen next year, right? We're going to be, at the same point, costs have risen, there are more vehicles, we took money from the ambulance fund, now we've got to put it back in there, and so all of a sudden, you're going to have to raise taxes again. And we're not really dealing with the issue here. The issue is rising costs, and we need to be finding a way to cut costs further. I don't envy you guys, even though I ran for, to be in your seat, because this is a very tough decision, very, very tough decision to try to decide how to cut and where to cut. But that's why you were elected, is to make these tough decisions. And I hope that you'll listen to Charlie Baum's plan. I think it's very fair. I think that it's reasonable, and it still raises taxes some, but at least it doesn't raise it as much as what is on the table currently. Thank you.
My name is Edward Phillips. I live at 114 East Maguire Street. I want to thank y'all very much for opening this up, for the citizens to come and talk to y'all, let you know where we stand. And Lisa, I know you have a tough job, and I want to, you know, thank you for being more conservative on your revenues. It makes sense to do that, because obviously, you don't want to say you're going to get X number of dollars, and of course, you come up short. It wouldn't make much sense. But obviously, at the current tax rates and the current revenues that we get from, from different areas, the revenues are there. You estimated enough that you were $20 million over your estimations. So what we're asking you to do as citizens is to prioritize, make those cuts right now, and prioritize where if you do come down to line three, six months into the year, and you're seeing more revenues and you can project that way, then you can come back and say, you know, let's give a little bit more for, for this particular line item, things of that nature. Because just as Philip mentioned, you know, the county government, the governments in general do not operate in a bubble. It's not just your tax that, that folks, especially in Smyrna and Laverne, Laverne had a 50, 50-cent tax increase maybe two, three years ago now. Smyrna's dealing with their 15 cents that they're going to have, and then you want to tack 10 more cents from, from the county? And that's everybody in the county, whether you live in the city or not. You're going to pay that extra 10 cents. We're asking you, as Gabriel mentioned, to make those tough decisions. You ran for this office, and we're asking you, as your, as your constituents, to make those tough decisions. And like I said, at the end of the day, the way y'all budget, y'all budget great. I mean, y'all are conservative, and like I said, in, in the revenue side. And with the current tax rates, you're, you're probably going to see more money coming in. So let's not raise taxes right now. Let's look at cutting back, and like I said, prioritize those line items that you cut, and maybe we can, we can buy some extra things that we may need. I mean, the things that Commissioner Baum does, asks to cut are worthwhile things at the end of the day. I mean, there's not a person in this room that wouldn't agree that our men and women, you know, that are first responders, don't deserve a raise at all. And let me be clear, folks. I, I do work for the county, so I'm speaking as the fact that I understand that Commissioner Baum's, you know, budget does ask for a cut in, in a raise for me. And I'm fine with that, because I can't sit here and go to my neighbor and say, I want you to pay 30, 30 bucks. It's not much a year, but it adds up. But I'm asking you to pay 30 bucks so I can take more money home and support my family, and that's not right, in my opinion. And I just can't do that to my neighbors. And I'm asking you to make, you know, common sense cuts, and let's, let's look at how we're going to do later on the year.
Good evening. My name is Keith Ray. I live at 3642 South Bend Drive in Indian Creek Preserve. On the eve of a proposed tax increase to cover an expected shortfall, concerned residents of Rutherford County have assembled once again, this time at a public hearing of the budget committee, to propose alternatives to a tax increase. We stand united in support of Charlie Baum's proposed budgetary amendments, which make necessary cuts and some unnecessary expenditures. Our team has reviewed the budget, the budgetary process, the county commission process of budgetary preparation, the mishandling of unspent revenue, and the general fund. We have concluded the following. A tax increase is not at all necessary, as there is not a revenue shortage. The economy of Rutherford is strong, and it's still growing. There are multiple ways to balance a budget to prevent this tax increase. There's multiple ways to skin this cat. There are multiple unspent surplus revenue cash balances, which would be more than a sufficient stopgap, if not hidden from the budgetary process altogether. County and state elected officials are aware of all the appropriate budgetary information, and yet still propose this tax increase. We would simply ask our elected officials to explain why they do not support a more transparent budgetary process. We would ask our commissioners why they rapidly beckon a tax increase when there are sufficient idle cash reserves. Why do our commissioners not adopt rules among their membership and call for a new state law that would prohibit, or at least curb, the current mishandling and wasteful process of hiding unspent revenue and private, low-return money market accounts? We support long-sighted remedies made by Dr. Todd, Commissioner Baum, and Commissioner Stevens to alleviate our team's core ailments. We ask each and every member of the community, commissioners included, who are here tonight to show support for eliminating a tax increase in Rutherford County, please step up to the microphone and, and call for a halt to this tax increase.
My name's Dorsey Meeks, and I've been a resident of Rutherford County since 1969. My name's Dorsey Meeks, and I've been a resident of Rutherford County since 1969. I've owned rental property since 1985. And over the years, personally, I've got to know a lot of my renters, one of them's an elderly lady that's on a fixed income, a single mother or two that works for minimum wage. And when you raise these taxes, you affect them also. They don't make $100,000 a year like some people here might. I come up around the square a lot lately, and I'm trying to understand why we have hired a vice mayor for $80,000 a year, this office is underneath the stairs at the Goldstein Building. And I worked as a supervisor for 12 years at Common Sign. I worked 12 hours a day, six days a week. If I said I couldn't do my job, I would be replaced. We've got, our sheriff's office are asking for 30 new vehicles, I understand. We're paying for a horse, keeping up a bunch of horses, come on. There's been zero arrests this year with the Horse Patrol. How do you arrest anybody riding a horse? Are they taking Lasso training? Really? Our officers, we're talking about having the best county in the state, our officers are not required to have CIT training. I could go on all night, but that's just a little taste. Thank you.
My name's Charles Redman. I have two properties here. I live at 1033 Gary Courts. I know the gentleman for me was commenting on the Sheriff's Department wanting 11 new officers, 30 brand-new cars. Guys, y'all don't know what the fire department has here. We still rely on volunteer firemen for our county. We cover over 32,000 homes here in the county. We have vehicles that are 12 years old. Yeah, we're getting, yeah, they're getting a new rescue truck this year off a grant. But I ask y'all, before y'all sign for these new 11 officers, look at the firemen, because, I mean, we need paid firemen for the county, too. I don't think the taxpayers know that they still rely on volunteer fire departments. You don't know if they're gonna come or not to help them, because, I mean, we all have families and full-time jobs, too. But think about it before y'all do anything. Thank you.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Questions regarding Rutherford County's use of unspent surplus revenue. Consider four major funds in Rutherford County, Tennessee. The total cash balance for all of them for unspent surplus revenue as of June 30, 2012, was nearly $105 million. With this huge cash balance, why do you think that Rutherford County needs any tax increase for the next fiscal year? What do you think of Senator Campfield's recommendation for legislation that would, in essence, make certain that the counties of Tennessee and the states should be able to transfer an adequate balance of unspent surplus revenue to the annual budget, or to the exact fund in the budget showing a shortfall, if in doing so, this would prevent a raise in taxes? What do you think of the suggestion that Rutherford County should stop these bank investments legally in order to be able to transfer an adequate amount of surplus revenue to the exact funds showing a shortfall, so that a raise in taxes could easily be prevented? What do you think of the report that the county commission has not been given the opportunity to vote on how to make use of unspent surplus revenue? Oh, by the way, the total debt, including interest, of our county as of June 30, 2012, was $508 million. At the present time, the county has a total balance of $39 million in CD investments and money market savings in the banks. These investments were paid for by unspent surplus revenue cash balances. The reason given for requiring a 4% tax increase for next year was the fact that the county has a $27 million shortfall in its budget, but consider this. Even though the $39 million of investments haven't matured yet, the county could easily implement an early withdrawal of part of this money and therefore avoid a tax increase. After all, this surplus was created when the county over-appropriated money to four major funds at the taxpayers' expense. The taxpayers own this surplus. Why do you think that our citizens do not deserve to have this surplus used for their financial benefit?
Thank you. My name is April Harrow. I live at 7518 Greenway Drive, and I agree with everything everyone has already said so far. I do, I do agree with Mr. Baum's budget. What I'm here to talk about is something nobody has talked about, is education. I know you guys don't have much of a decision on that, but the school board does, and they have not listened to ideas in how to cut their budget. We had, had mentioned to one of the board members that citizens would be willing to pay more in property taxes if, if they cut their ties with federal and state funding, and they refuse to do so. Also, with them taking that on, the federal and state funding, they have to take on Common Core, at least that's what they voted to agree to, which requires us to, in 2014, to have to completely fund by us local people for all the computers and all the books and so forth. The Common Core is going to be required, all the schools to implement, and it's gonna cost us even more money than what you're asking for from us right now. If they would cut their ties with state and federal funding and get rid of Common Core, since the legislators didn't even know it existed and did not accept it, but the school board did accept it, without even knowing what was involved and how much money it was gonna cost us, we are now going to have to pay at least double of what you plan on raising our property taxes at, at this moment, next year. So, just to let you know that a lot of people don't know about Common Core and what it ties into financially, but for the entire county, you can take what you plan on raising our taxes to right now and double it next year. Thank you.
I live at 1030 Brinkston Run here in Murfreesboro, and I also own another house here in Murfreesboro, so I'm very interested in the tax increase. I'm not too concerned about what, what you're proposing to spend on schools. When I look at per, per student amounts and everything, I think they look pretty good. I think Dr. Odom does a pretty good job there. But what I, what I am concerned about is when we look at the, the general fund, and we see some pretty huge increases from $76 million to $82,808. I think we're getting out of control there, pretty bad. And it's also contributing to the fact we're using up a lot of fund balances this year, and that's gonna come to bite us next year. Our run rate's out of control. We cannot sustain that. There's several reasons. I'll echo some of the reasons with the gentleman earlier talking about health insurance. We don't need to be paying for increases in health insurance. No other company around is really doing that, and trust me, I work in the industry, and it's, it's just not happening. We gotta pass that along. Everybody should be responsible for bad policies that are shoved down our throats and stuff like that. Everybody needs to take, take their lump, just like all the private sector does. We need to make sure, we need to get out of a pension plan. We need to stop unfunded mandates for our children, or that, not unfunded mandates, but really unfunded liabilities there. We gotta stop that. We need to get into more, you know, 401K-type plans. I don't know exactly what they're called in government, I think it may be a little different. But we need to get into that, where we pay it out as we go, and then we're done. We have no responsibility to them whatsoever, and it's their money. It's even better for them. They invest how they want. It's great. Where I do have concern is, is when we look at the general fund, we're, we're looking at absorbing officers that were part of the drug fund. You know, if you can't afford them, you can't afford them, you know? I've worked in budgeting and planning for a long time. You know, when I, when, when we can't afford some in the private sector, we have a reduction in force. Happens a lot. Happened to me in the last two years, it happened to my wife in the last two years. We're both lucky enough to find jobs. But, you know, we, we have to, to be responsible there. We need to get back to the principles of a, you know, a nice government, but a restricted government. Quit spending so much money. You know, truthfully, you know, between the sheriff and the mayor, I thought I'd elect the Republicans, but they're bringing up some tax increases, it doesn't look like it. And that's really not the, the beliefs of our citizens here. So, as we look forward, I don't, and I'll, I'll tell you this, I don't believe there's any shenanigans going on with fund balances. I get it, I remember governmental accounting. There's certain requirements there when you get into fund accounting. I fully understand that. But our 20, 21 million dollars, whatever it is we're using up for fund balances, unsustainable for the future. We got us a problem going here, guys. We need to fix it. Thank you.
I'm Barry Hudgens. I live at 2326 Nickajack Trail. You know, I, I looked at the presentation that you, you gave, a very good presentation. You, you covered your numbers well. There was one thing that really stuck out to me, though. In terms of last year to this year, there was a, an increase of about 14% to 16% in liabilities, and that went strictly to salaries and benefits. Is that pretty much correct? Okay. Seems to me that's what I saw. I didn't, I can't see real well, so I'm not sure about those numbers. But, you know, here's, here's the thing. You know, I've been in, in Rutherford County for, I guess, about 10 years now. Every year, my taxes go up, but in the last four years, the value of my house has not. You know, I, I continue to pay higher taxes. Tennessee as a state has the highest tax rate, local, state and local taxes has the highest rate in the country. We are the highest tax state in the country. Rutherford County, our, our mean tax base for all the counties is $933. Rutherford County is $1,155. We're, we're above. Now, the whole question to me is, you know, I, I know you guys are all upstanding citizens, and you've, you've earned your place here, but that's really what I'm asking you, is are you citizens or are you government people? Cause that's, you know, we're, we are getting to the place in this nation where the, the government class is, is becoming a class instead of being citizens. And so, I'm just appealing to you as a citizen to think about this in terms of citizen. I'm not able to go to somebody else and get money when I can't make my bills. I have to cut somewhere. And, you know, and, and government should be no different. You, you are representative, representatives of the people. So, my, my suggestion to you is, you know, if you are citizens, then we would like to see that side of you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Neer. I live at 5207 Camelia View Way in Smyrna. And last November, my family and I fled the, the People's Republic of New York State. And there were multiple reasons why we fled that state, one of them being taxes, obviously. And I have to say that not only do I agree with everything that every person up here has come up speaking about, and I won't reiterate all of the great points, but this meeting tonight is like deja vu to me, which is unfortunate, because I thought I was leaving this when I left in November. If you wanna see what really destroys a town, and a county, and a state, you don't have to look any further than the town that I grew, well, that I lived in the last 10 years. It got so bad that when I left, a house sitting on a quarter-acre lot, 2,000 square foot, decent-sized home, right? Could expect to pay anywhere from $6,500 to $9,000 in taxes. All right? That is close to unsustainable for a household with two people and their incomes, let alone a single mom, a single dad, somebody on a fixed income. I've seen it firsthand, and it's not a direction that you wanna go, and I know, obviously and thankfully, we are not at that point, yet. But I have seen the progression myself firsthand. It is a slippery slope. It does happen. A lot of folks brought up a lot of good points about future expenditures to come. Those things are gonna creep up on you, and unless you address spending instead of tax hikes, that burden is gonna fall solely on the people of this county. And it would be unfortunate to see the mass exodus out of this county the way that we've seen out of New York State in the last 10 years. So, I'll just leave by saying, let my family and I be a warning to your county. We've, we've seen it firsthand. Thank you.
My name's Scott Lewis. I live at 116 Wagon Trail in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Just wanna appreciate the, or I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and speak and have an open debate about this. When I came in here, I didn't originally think I was gonna speak. I just wanna sit here and listen to everyone's opinions, and I respect everyone's opinions up here. I know that people are passionate about their beliefs, but some of the things I was hearing had just prompted me to wanna get up and say something. I know the first gentleman that spoke, you know, he had all his numbers and did a really good job speaking, but he had discussed the SRO program. And I know my wife is a teacher in Rutherford County, so she may or may not get a raise based on this budget, which, you know, in our household, whatever raise she gets is not gonna make or break us. It's not really that big of a concern, but I know after the Newtown shooting about six months ago, she, she came home for days crying, every day, didn't know what was gonna happen. And then wanting to cut the SROs for the schools, it's like, yes, every school does have an SRO, but they're only there three days a week. So, hopefully, if anyone's gonna come and do anything bad at the school, they pick one of those days that the SRO is actually gonna be there. We hear a lot of things about leadership, and, and it's time for you guys to, to stand up and lead, but sometimes making the hard decisions are the things that are not popular. Not many people run on, let's raise taxes. It's not a popular thing. I don't think the tax burden in Rutherford County in Tennessee is, is too high. We don't have a state income tax like New York does. You know, we do have a high sales tax, but, you know, that is what it is. I just don't think that the extra 30, 50, $100, depending on the value of your home, is, is really gonna make or break many people. I understand some people, it may be a hardship, but most people in general, I think they can do that. You know, we're offering suggestions to you guys on how to balance your budget. If people need suggestions on how to, how to come up with an extra $50 a year, $80 a year, maybe one less soda a week, skip your latte a couple days, one less dinner a year out with the family, it's not that big of a burden, you know? And then, making the harder decisions and, and, you know, leading is sometimes doing what's best for the county, even though the more loud majority may disagree with it. Having taxes is part of living in a civilized society. We haven't had a property tax increase since 2009, but people keep talking about cuts, cuts, cuts. That's not sustainable. You can't continue to cut every single year and continue to take in the same money that you did in 2009 when inflation has not stayed flat. Things cost more money.
less people in the, in the audience here to talk about the pay, uh, property tax increase then. And then we had another one back to back in 2009. I think it was a total little over 10 percent increase then. And then in between years, we've had property assessments where the property, a tax, a hidden tax goes up when your property value is reassessed at a higher rate, even though there was no tax increase. I don't know if you remember, Mayor, but I, when we first met, we met somewhere around 2000, 2008, 2007, and I was, I was optimistic when I came, moved back from England and saw what a nanny state truly looks like, and it scared the heck out of me. And so I, I got involved in local politics, and I wanted to offer suggestions. I actually went and did a ton of research about how the municipalities that are up against it, that can't figure out how they're going to pay their bills, how can they get by? There's a lot of creative strategies and tactics out there, and I did a lot of research, and I printed them out. And I actually handed you a stack of papers. Do you remember that, Mayor? A stack of papers where other municipalities had successfully figured out how to save, do, provide the services without raising taxes. So we ask you guys tonight to show some fortitude and do the tough thing. All due respect, I've been, we've cut out those extra meals, we've cut out those extra benefits for our family since 2008, since I've been here. And maybe many more have done it for even longer. To slice that piece of bologna off one more slice at a time, eventually you wind up with the hill. And that's what, that's what's happening to the county with our personal income when you raise property taxes. You should have some fortitude and listen to Mr. Baum's suggestions. It'd be the first time we've had a cut since I've been here. There's never been a cut in the budget since I've been here. And the only cuts I have seen, and this is totally gratuitous, but my wife happens to be an elected official, she's been able to reduce her budget three years in a row. I think we can do it across the county. Why do we need across-the-board pay raises? What I hear in the paper and read, the comments that I've heard, is that we got to keep up with the other counties, we got to be, remain competitive. Since when did keeping up with the government Joneses become a priority? If we got people that want to move somewhere else, I guarantee you, there'll be 100 people apply for their job the minute they find out it's vacant. That is a cop-out to say, we got to keep up with other counties. What are they doing? They're trying to keep up with us. It's an arms race with property taxes and spending our money. So I ask you at a time when there's record foreclosures, where people can't, can't even pay their own mortgage and they're having their house taken away from, how, how do you, why do you want to stack up and add one more property tax? How much is enough? What, what part of that pie are you going to get to, ever get to and say, wow, we finally got a big enough percentage of what you guys are giving us that we can run our county?
I'm Kathy McMahon. I live at 1401 East Northfield Boulevard and have been there for over 30 years. Rutherford County is a great place to live. I am a 19, I'm not going to tell you the year. I am a graduate of Smyrna High School. I remember the day when ambulances had to come down from Murfreesboro to get people in Smyrna. I'm a little nervous now, excuse my voice for breaking. This is dear to my heart. I am thrilled that we have an ambulance service like we do. I am thrilled that we have a county fire department like we do, even though I live in the city. I travel outside the, the city limits. I actually have family outside the city limits. I remember a day when there was very little that a volunteer fire department could do. They are, we are building a department, it's going to cost us something. Please keep us moving forward. We cannot afford to drop the ball. We are growing, and growth does not pay for itself in a timely manner. Our children are precious. My two are grown, but they are graduates of Oakland High School. They've had opportunities there. I want the future children to have opportunities. I'm getting older. When I am old and unable to stand up here, I want the people who are running this county to be well-educated. I don't want them to be leftover folks that can't go anywhere else and do anything. I want Rutherford County to be wonderful. We are educating with high, high test scores, and we are doing it well below the state average. Please keep supporting the school board. Please keep biting a piece every year and keep that thing moving forward so that we stay doing a good job. I have been to meetings, I have heard the review process, I have seen people come in and ask, budget departments come in and ask for money for their departments. I have listened to the mayor's explanations of most of them, I haven't got all the meetings. I am satisfied with your review process. It's been hard, you don't always agree with each other. I don't even always like what you have to say. But you listen, and you listen to each other in a civil manner. I appreciate that, and you are open, and when I want to talk to you after a meeting, you listen to me well, and I appreciate that. I'm telling you now, as a retired school teacher, I want SROs in every elementary school in this county. Part-time is not enough anymore. We know what bad things happen, and I'm going to tell you, I've been there. Sometimes it's children who do a few things, and sometimes it's parents. But we really have no protection from anybody who walks in off the street. Oh, by the way, I own only one house in this county.
My name is Derek Englet. I live at 110 Aretha Court. This is my first public hearing. I'm probably one of the, probably the youngest person in here, but I just want to thank you guys' time for doing this. I'm young, I've, I've been only working for five years, but at my company, when the times got hard, we had to cut bonuses, we had to cut, we even had to cut office supplies. But, and I paid for all my education myself, and I'm paying for it right now. If I can squeeze money and my personal budget to pay off half of my $40,000 student loan in less than five years, I think this county could do the same and find a way to cut somewhere. We have 401K up in my work, match 4%. If it's good enough for the private sector, I believe it should be good enough for our public officials, too. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will ask you please to refrain from the applause after each person speaks. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who has not had a chance to speak?
Most of you know me, and you know that I probably can't say much in three minutes. I didn't really come to speak. I don't hear well, so I just got a seat on the front, and it wound up giving me a piece of paper, and I brought it up, filled it out, so I thought I would. I was born and raised in Rutherford County. Lived here all my life, except for two years in the Navy during World War II. I'll be 87, my coming birthday. As I was being raised up in a little community out here called Halls Hill, we had an old Victrola in the living room. We had a record that played, I believe it was the Carter Family. The name of the song that I remember played the most was "A Picture From Life's Other Side." So I'd like to kind of talk about that. The other side are the renters, and I have two apartment complexes. Taxes is not exactly a problem for me, the Lord's been good to me, I've been blessed. But I see these people that rent from me every day suffer. They're barely able to make it. I haven't raised my rents in several years. I believe the court has raised the taxes into eight and maybe nine, but I didn't raise my rents. Most of the other people, though, do, because they're either an investment group or a corporation, and they have to. I probably won't raise them if you raise the taxes this time, regardless of whether you do it the small amount, which I would recommend, or the large amount. But I do believe that you should take in consideration those people that rent property. They suffer the same as if they were paying taxes, because their rents go up and they have to pay, have to pay just like they do the taxes. And I want to say this as I sit down. This very morning, I had a little lady, one of my renters, came by, and she asked me to borrow $10 to get her baby's formula till Friday. Now, that's a picture of life so the side. Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak who has not had a chance to speak? Please come forward if you want to speak.
Hi, my name is James Page, and I currently live in Laverne. And I appreciate the details, and I haven't been paying much attention to what the details of the, of the committee, of your budget, what you've got going on. I appreciate the work you all put into it. But one of the things that typically I, I've thought about with committees, and I've associated with them, is we elect people, we pick people in committees, and they go do the job that they need to do, and trust them to make that job, to do that, to do, to do their work. So I guess the budget details that I saw up there kind of misses the point and, and the focus of what you're doing. Where, where I'm coming from, you know, my life, if we haven't had the money, we, we don't buy it. You know, it's just the way it's been. If, if, you know, if my bills get above my income, I can't go to my boss and demand, you know, it doesn't, doesn't work that way. You know, I don't get more money because my, my bills outweigh my income. You know, we, we've done this, my wife and I, we're, our 25th wedding anniversary coming up in August, and we've done one income, so still at this point in my life, we're a paycheck-to-paycheck family. And there, there's lots of aspects and details to these that, that I know the answers for, and I, and I guarantee, I'm not the brightest person in here, I'm one of the dimmer people in the building right now. And I still know the answers to those, and people have mentioned there's some tough decisions and unpopular things to do that's pretty easy to solve about making our schools safe. I, again, I got to admit, I, I have a bias there. We homeschool, we've homeschooled for almost 20 years, so that's, I have a different perspective on it, but it's real easy to keep public schools safe if you get past political correctness. But, you know, I say that I don't care about the details, but typically when politicians in, in history have been, been forced to make their choices and not allowed to have a tax increase, they, they make those choices as painful as possible to, to what typically they, I think that they view us as peasants, you, me as a peasant. Spent a lot of years, decades of my life in other countries and, and seeing what I've, what's been happening, and thought that I've, I've seen the end of, you know, thought we won the Cold War. I was there, and what was West Germany when that wall fell? And, and thought we had that done, but, you know, I, I see it over and over again where it's, that's not the case. But I just say, you know, we put our house for sale, I live in Laverne, and they doubled the water bill, thousands of dollars more in taxes. It's not a latte, it's pretty big. We put our house for sale yesterday, and I just pretty much came to, to gauge the weather to see, a lot of times, these are, these things are foregone conclusion, and I just wanted to see what your view was before I pick out where, where we're going to move to.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not had a chance to speak?
Hello, I'm Emily Mitchell. I live at 2626 Big Eagle Trail. And I am sorry, I'm, where's the oldest speaker? I'm the shortest speaker, but I am also going to have the shortest thing to say. I am a Rutherford County teacher. I am not here to demand that you provide everything for me. I would like to advocate for my students. I think they deserve the best that we can offer them in this county. They are the future of our county, and providing the best education that we can is important to me, and also the best safety and security that we can. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? I'm really not trying to rush you, but I am going to be considered of Mr. Stevens, who did ask to have more time, but I want to give everybody a chance to speak before I come back around to him. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not had a chance to speak?
I'm Mark Schweiger. I live at 2841 Waywood Drive here in Murfreesboro. And I'm relatively new resident to the county. Been here for about a year and a half now, and have become more involved with what's going on recently. Recent graduate of the City of Murfreesboro Citizens Academy, and also the Sheriff's Academy, so I've tried to get some insight into, to what's going on. I came tonight purely to gather information, as I've listened to everybody talk and listened to the presentation, I've, I kind of have mixed emotions and mixed opinions about what's going on. This is a very strong county, nationally recognized. We're growing, and the growth of the county is a good thing, but the expenses of the county have got to stay in proportion to that growth. As the county grows, the expenses are going to increase naturally. But we got to make sure that we don't get too far ahead with our taxes of what the growth is, and stay in line with that. So are we going to need to see tax increases from time to time? Yes, but we need to make sure that those are controlled. As I have looked around, I've seen some opportunities for savings that I'm not sure we've really heard a lot about tonight and looked at. There has been talk about employee health insurance. Everybody is, is really facing that nationally now with the increases in health insurance. The funding that we're doing for the family portion of the health insurance, and even the employee portion, is out of proportion to what you see in private industry. I think that really needs to be reconsidered. The pension plan, you know, the west coast has gone down the tubes, northeast has gone down the tubes with these crazy pension plans. If you're working outside of, in private industry today, you're not going to have a pension plan anywhere like we've got here. So that, that really needs to be reevaluated. I come from an emergency services background. I see huge opportunity in our 911 system here. We've got a 911 system for the city, we've got one that the ambulance service operates, and we've got one that the sheriff's department operates. There's no reason that all of those people should not be sitting in one 911 center together, to include the City of Laverne and the City of Smyrna. They all have the same individual 911 systems.
This is a very strong county, nationally recognized. We're growing, and the growth of the county is a good thing, but the expenses of the county have gotta stay in proportion to that growth. As the county grows, the expenses are gonna increase naturally. But we gotta make sure that we don't get too far ahead with our taxes of what the growth is and stay in line with that. So are we gonna need to see tax increases from time to time? Yes, but we need to make sure that those are controlled. As I have looked around, I've seen some opportunities for savings that I'm not sure we've really heard a lot about tonight and looked at. There has been talk about employee health insurance. Everybody is really facing that nationally now with the increases in health insurance. The funding that we're doing for the family portion of the health insurance and even the employee portion is out of proportion to what you see in private industry. I think that really needs to be reconsidered. The pension plan, you know, the West Coast has gone down the tubes, Northeast has gone down the tubes with these crazy pension plans. If you're working outside of, in private industry today, you're not gonna have a pension plan anywhere like we've got here. So that really needs to be reevaluated. I come from an emergency services background. I see huge opportunity in our 911 system here. We've got a 911 system for the city. We've got one that the ambulance service operates, and we've got one that the sheriff's department operates. There's no reason that all of those people should not be sitting in one 911 center together to include the City of Laverne and the City of Smyrna. They all have the same individual 911 systems, just a duplication in services and cost. We spend a lot of money on jail. You know, we've got crime. We don't like to talk about it, but that's one of the real issues that's out there. There's a lot of money being spent there. But as we looked around, I saw one set of operations for the juvenile justice program, very nice facility, separate operations to feed the jail, separate operations for the workhouse. That all needs to be brought in under one single operation. You know, we've got huge opportunities. Schools, we've gotta stay with the kids. You know, that's our future. We've gotta make sure we fund those. So, you know, like I said, I have mixed emotions, but thank you very much.
My name is Jacob Bogel. I live at 1211 Hazelwood Street. It seems like anytime government asks for money there, you know, it's always for the children. On a national level, since 1970, we have tripled the amount of money that we spend on education. And yet test scores have remained flat. More money does not equal better education. As far as security, no government can stop a crazy person from barging in and doing something bad. It's not going to happen. You know, we're talking about just a little bit, you know, extra taxes. Well, we've got federal income tax. We've got taxes for Social Security, unemployment, state sales tax, local sales tax, wheel tax, property taxes, extra taxes on our cable bill and phone bill and water bill. You know, we're being taxed to death here little by little. Then you add in the debt, the national debt, the state debt, local debt. Every person in this room, your children and your grandchildren, are $58,000 in debt just for public debt, not your own, public debt. $58,000. And so like someone asked before, you know, when is enough enough?
My name's Mac Nolan. I live at 831 Allen Road. And I'll tell you when enough is enough. It's when the parents start being parents and people take responsibility for their actions, and the government doesn't have to do it for them.
I will ask again, is there anyone else who would like to speak? This is my last call. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Stevens?
Does the three-minute rule apply again? Okay. So when I first spoke, we were talking about pensions, health insurance, and debt. And I added up the appropriations in this budget for the pensions and the insurance, and it's $73 million. We can't keep cutting copiers and coffee and $10,000 here and solve our problems. We've got to get the big things in the budget and grab those things by the horns and solve the problems. We have to eliminate the pension system for all new hires over 20 or 30 years. If we stop paying the 12 and a half cents into the pension system and had a 4% match on a 401K plan, the savings would be millions. And then all the employees who don't stay for 20 or 30 years could leave and go somewhere else and take their 401K with them as opposed to not getting anything from the pension until they're 60, if they're vested. This is something that we have to change. It's brought down cities and states, and ours is one of the most conservatively managed ones. That sounds great, but the fact is that it's only about 81% funded. The state treasurer says that we have $2.5 billion of unfunded liability for the state employees and $2.5 billion of unfunded liabilities for the teachers. And seven local governments have already pulled out of the state consolidated retirement system. I don't want us to be the last one there holding the bag when all the other people have left. It's not fair to our current employees who think they're gonna get a pension when they're not going to if we don't make some changes to it. I've been saying this from day one, and I've been laughed at and ridiculed and personally attacked at meetings for questioning these things. But the facts are the facts. The system is gonna go belly up if we don't make some changes. Also, the health insurance rates, you know, out in the private sector, the rates are going up on everybody, even the people below the median. The rates are going up on them, and they didn't get a subsidy from the county government to help them with theirs. We've got to look at reforming the health insurance plan to make it less costly to the taxpayers. And that includes making it, and make an incentive for the spouse to go get insurance at their own private employer or through a private plan and get them off of the taxpayer's plan. We have a position in the ambulance department. I'm switching gears a little bit. It's the community outreach coordinator. She makes almost $60,000 driving ambulance to the schools. When you add her benefits and the slush fund she has for community outreach and the gas and so forth, it's $80,000, $900,000 for this position. That's something that we can cut. The director said at the public safety meeting that that position was not critical to their operation. I don't know why we still have that in our budget. That's something that we can eliminate and not affect any services at all. As I said earlier, I would cut the expanded pay scales, the $800,000. Eliminate or reduce the SRO proposal. And I would also keep the drug positions that we're assuming in the drug fund and free up that money in the general fund.
Ladies and gentlemen, I did give, excuse me, Mr. Stevens, a chance to come around. It's the second time. Is there anyone who did not feel that they could adequately express their opinions when they came to the podium for the first time? I'll take a few more minutes to give you a chance to come back to the podium.
Say to Philip Byer again, two things. When people do come up to the podium, they ought to announce right up like one lady did. Said, "I work for the government. I'm a teacher." They need to say, "I work for the government," or "I'm in the private sector." "I'm in the private sector." The other thing is, like we already said, we all live in our budget, and we're just asking y'all to stay within the budget, the current budget, not the proposed budget.
I'm Kathy McManan still. Just a couple of things. I too live on a budget. It's very tough. I have watched you deal with insurance this year. I know how you have changed insurance plans. I know the teeth-natching, the troubles that you're gonna face when the employees really realize how much you have cut their insurance this year. So I appreciate you standing up to it and doing what you need. I just wanna be sure people know that you are looking at that and things have been cut considerably. I also want folks to just think about emergency vehicles. We have a lot of sheriff's department cars and some other department vehicles that are very, very old. You're talking about actually buying some this time, and you're planning on buying some more next year. I want, I know I will go down the street now, and every time I see a fire department vehicle, trucks are large, I will wonder what kinda shape it's in, what kinda mileage does it have? And as it goes by me at a fast speed, I wanna know it's gonna be safe. I wanna know the sheriff's car ain't gonna break down and hit me as it goes flying down the road. It's not just the sheriff's folks that have to be safe in those vehicles. And when they go traveling off-road or down the interstate and onto this, that, and the other, I wanna know that I'm safe when they pass me by. So please stick to your courses and do what we have to do. Thank you very much.
Jeff Rainwater, Murfreesboro. Just one thing I didn't get to cover in what I spoke earlier was about the amount of money we're spending for, wanna spend for SROs. A lot of this came as just a knee-jerk reaction coming out of Sandy Hook. Not really rational. Anybody that believes an SRO inside a school is gonna change an active shooter situation, they're wrong. There's no way possible that you're not gonna have a bad outcome there. Ultimately, the best thing to do, lock the door. Don't have kids in trailers in the front yard. That's what you need to be looking at. Not a bunch of, not a bunch of SROs standing there. Now, we need SROs for other reasons. We need SROs to be working with our children, you know, working with them on things like how to stand up to say no to drugs, those type things. That's what an SRO really needs to be worried about. What's going on in the little community around the school? They hear something about to go on. That's the kinda stuff they need to be working on. If we think that they can stop a Sandy Hook, nah, not gonna happen. There's no way. So the last thing I wanna say is, I wanna thank the accountants for putting this together. Sometime knowing what you go through, don't beat the accountants up. They're just the messenger. Thank you.
I just wanted to add to what Robert had to say about pension funds. I don't think most people know exactly how expensive a pension is. But I just met with a lady today, and she was about to draw a pension on her retirement. It was worth around $80,000. And for that $80,000, she's gonna draw $170 a month. And so when you think about a retiring county employee, what's the average that they bring home, Robert? $37,000. So that would be, you know, well over 10 times eight. So each pension is worth over $8 million is what it'd amount to by the end, that we'll have to be there. And so this future pension liability is really, really huge. And I don't think people realize just how big it is. And so that's just one person. One $30,000 pension's gonna run you around $8 million. And so then you multiply that by all the different amount of employees we have in the county, and you see how this thing just blows up. And that's why California has gone under and why Detroit has had to go under. And they're just further ahead of us. They're 20, 20 years ahead of us. And the same curve is coming our way. This generation that's gonna retire is gonna be very, very expensive. And we need to be thinking about that and planning for it now and making the right decisions now. Otherwise, we'll have to make very tough decisions in the future, and that's called bankruptcy. And what do you think these people that are on these pensions are gonna do then? What, you think these renters are gonna have a hard problem? Imagine these people that have been drawing this pension for 20 years, and all of a sudden, they've still got 10 years to live, and then they have no money coming in. I mean, this is really important issues here that we have to address now. Otherwise, it'll be too late.
To the gentleman that said that SROs would not save those kids at Sandy Hook, if there would've been an SRO there, there would've been a lot less kids dead. There would've been a dead SRO. I am a former SRO. I have been there in that situation where I thought shots were fired in the cafeteria. And I've gone running in, pushing kids to the floor, expecting something to happen, and it's been firecrackers. To say that an SRO would not have saved those kids, there might've been, he might've saved one. But one kid is worth it, and I would lay down my life in a school to save one kid. That's a school board issue. But I'm saying the SROs, I didn't put it in my budget, but I support it 100%. Thank you.
I think we may be getting a little off-topic about armed teachers and all that. That's not a discussion for here or anything like that. But I agree with the officer. You're not gonna prevent something like that, but you can definitely mitigate it. And, you know, for full disclosure, my wife is a county employee. I work for a private entity. My wife is on my insurance. You know, I have a pension and a 401K, and all that's great. And, you know, you guys need to consider those kinda things. But, you know, as far as, like the officer said, it's how much money is worth a child's life? You know, for anyone that has kids out there, you know, they talked about education and saying, "Oh, we're gonna have to fund all the computers and all the books." Well, that makes sense because we're trying to educate our children. You know, and, you know, as someone else said, the children are the future of the state. They're the ones that are gonna be sitting here in 20, 30 years making these decisions. But, you know, I don't know how much control you guys have over the school board, budget, as far as SROs go. But people have been talking about it here, so I figure I'd talk a little bit about it also. But, you know, just having an SRO there a few days a week, you know, why should teachers go in and make as little as they do? And everyone agrees teachers should be paid more, and they're not paid enough. But to go in and fear every day for your safety. You know, people shouldn't have to go to work and make as little as teachers do and have fear of anything like that. You know, and especially for the kids. But, you know, I don't know if I made it clear when I was up here last time, but I do support the 10 cent measure. You know, like I said, I think there's a lot of people out there that don't quite understand what it's for. Or, you know, the slideshow you put together was very informative, and a lot of people don't know. And it's just, we hear the loudest voices, but it's not always the majority of the voices. But, you know, I hope you guys, you know, choose to make the hard decision, accept the proposal. You know, it's been 2009 since we've had a budget increase. I mean, how many more years are we gonna sit here every year when you guys try to get a little bit more money to pay for? Is it gonna be 2015, 2016, and you still guys are working off a 2009 budget? I just don't think that's sustainable at all. Thank you.
Jeremy Neer, again, still. I just wanna make a quick comment about the educational spending. Again, going back to my prior experience in New York State, the town that I left, the year that I left last year, the town, I'm not talking county, town, had approximately 5,500 students, okay, in the town going through public school. The town spent $88 million on the school system, okay? When you work that out, that comes to approximately $14,667, I think, dollars per student, okay? Which is about par with what New York State's spending. You know, I think New York State's maybe a little lower across the state. But I can tell you that the education system is no different or no better than that of Utah, which has been proven that I think the average cost in Utah is $8,000 plus per student. So if you take a look at Utah versus New York State, New York State's spending almost double, and I think they are spending double than here, right? I think it's about $7,000 per student here, right? Spending does not equal education. Higher spending does not equal better education. So I just want to caution everybody, sometimes the best thing for the students isn't always the most expensive or increasing spending. I just wanna caution that notion, okay? Just because you wanna hold the budget on education at a standstill doesn't mean that you dislike kids, doesn't mean that you dislike teachers. It just means that you understand that higher spending does not always mean better education. Please be wary of that concept because I know all too well about the increased pensions and the increased healthcare costs from the town that I just came from. Thank you.
Jake Robbins, just wanna clarify that even though the taxes haven't gone up since 2009, the budget has gone up every year. They spend more money every year. If we have higher tax collections or higher sales tax revenue, that money is spent, okay? So the budget has gone up. We've played games with the 21% that would've been a property tax increase if we haven't taken that money from the rainy day fund. That, to me, is a 21% overspending is what you guys are doing on top of the 10 cents or 5 cents that you're asking to increase. So to be clear, we are spending more money. We're just asking you to live like we do and make a hard choice. You have an option. Why not take advantage of that option? Go out and do something courageous. It's easy to tax and spend and borrow, and we've been doing that ever since I've been here in the county. Just asking you to look at that plan. Why can't we take a hard look and just implement a plan that actually says, "Hey, we're gonna be responsible as your county officials. We're gonna be responsible with your money." That's all we're asking you to do.
Edward Phillips.
First off, I just want to thank everybody for showing up. I mean, I know the Budget Committee and Mrs. Nolan up there would, is appreciative of everyone showing up and, and expressing their ideas, whether you're for or against what they're proposing. A few things that were mentioned, you know, we've had three people that have lived in other areas, whether it's New York or, or, or have been to England and lived for, for a little while. I'm sorry, I'm referring, the third person I'm actually referring to is a friend of mine who is from California. You know, the friend, I asked him, what do you see where Rutherford County is, and more specifically Murfreesboro, at the time that we were talking about this? Where do you see that Murfreesboro is versus where the place you are from in California, San Diego, is when you left it? Basically, the way he described it was San Diego in the 1980s is where roughly Murfreesboro is. And you would, you think of San Diego, it's, it's pretty much San Diego County, it's, it's the whole entire place. So he kind of translated that to Rutherford County. I don't think when they mentioned that they were trying to be hyperbolic because it doesn't really prove a point. But what it does is allow y'all to gauge. I mean, doing the same thing over and over again expecting different results is insanity. And if we're going to try to copy, as, as we've been warned, that like New York and California and other places do, and I know you guys, I know most of you guys personally. Actually, I do know all of you guys personally. Y'all aren't insane, I know y'all are not. And, and I don't mean that as a joke. I mean, y'all are smart people, your voters wouldn't have voted for you if you weren't. But, we need y'all to make these decisions. And like I said, at the end of the day, you've been conservative in your estimates. The revenue at, at this moment, the, the current tax rates and, and revenues that you get from different sources is $20 million more than what you expected last year. Prioritize, folks. Let's cut things back. And like I said, and, and we're using Commissioner Baum's example. I'm sure he, you know, he didn't do it necessarily to get his name set up here a million times, but he's at least put something forward that cuts back the growth. It's not that we're cutting back anything as far as from where we were. We're just cutting back the growth enough to stay within what we've got right now. And it's just like our, our home budgets. If you see a little extra come in, I mean, you could put some towards savings, you could put some towards that extra meal that you wanted to go out and do with your family or your, your gift that you wanted to give to your son or daughter or something like that. Just prioritize, that's all we're asking for you guys to do, please. Thank you.
Mark Swiker. I didn't get to finish my comment while ago on the reserve funds. It is great that the county has got the amount of money stashed away for a rainy day fund that we do, but we cannot use that money for daily operations. That must be used as a contingency, emergency fund. If we want to pull out parts of that money for special issues, I see that being appropriate, not for general operations of the budget. The SRO program, I've got a daughter that's entering the school system, and that's one thing that has really, really brought, come to my attention. Would an SRO stop Sandy Hook? No. Would they make an impact on it? Yes. And as the sheriff said, if one kid's life is saved, that's one kid's life that's saved. But having an officer in the school is going to make a difference. Not only from a safety standpoint, but from a citizenship standpoint. Somebody made a comment earlier about what's happening with the families and when enough's enough. These kids, many of them don't have father figures, many of them don't have a good home life. But seeing that person of authority in the school systems makes a huge impact on the kids. So I think the SRO program is something we need to move forward with, and I wish the city would duplicate that also. I'm Georgian native, we've got a little thing down there called Splotch. I don't know if that's a Tennessee option or not. But it's local option sales tax, that whenever there is an issue that come forward, that there needed to be a fair amount of money spent on, that could be looked at from a project standpoint, that was brought forward to the, to the voters of the county. They elected to add a 1%, 2% penny sales tax for a limited period of time or to raise a specific amount of money. Being in some rural counties that have gone through some growth, we brought a fire department online by doing that. Started off from a full volunteer fire department to bring in equipment in to go into a paid fire department. You don't pay for operations out of it, you just do your capital expenditures. I think that's an option that we need to look at. I know that the county's behind on the radio system for the public safety standpoint. Going with a truant 800 megahertz system is going to be millions of dollars. And I would hate to see that come out of operations. We can let this be a user tax essentially, where everybody that goes to the grocery store pays a penny. People from our neighboring counties, we talked about Williamson County and other places, when they come to shop here, they can help buy some of these things. Thank you.
Hello, I'm April Harrell again. And for the record, technically, I'm a Rutherford County teacher. I homeschool my children because the academics in the schools were very poor. And due to my teaching of my daughter and her academy teachers, she'll be graduating two years early than normal. If she was in the public schools, they'd have her as a freshman this year. And they refused me IQ tests and so forth in order to put her where she needs to be. They tried to tell me that she couldn't pass T cap exam without a calculator because the kids aren't intelligent enough to do that. And the only reason why their test scores are so high is because, one of the reasons is because they use calculators on the tests. My daughter proved them wrong two years in a row, scoring advanced in math both years and finishing 15 minutes early on the math test without ever touching a calculator. The teachers have repeatedly told me that they don't have time to teach my children. Common Core will give them less time because it doubles down on No Child Left Behind. You say that expensive books and computers, a computer for every child is important, we should spend it. No, it's not important, and Common Core is not a good education system. University professors who even helped create Common Core will not sign on it because they said it is not rigorous education, it is not better. And our Rutherford County School Board wants to give the new teachers 1.5% increase on their pay when with Common Core, they will be teaching less than what they do now. So why should we pay them more for teaching less? Common Core will create a system where the teachers will end up being facilitators, not teachers. Everything will be computerized. So I don't understand why the Rutherford County Board, School Board cannot create a better, tighter budget that will help you guys have a better budget as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone else who would like to speak? I don't see anyone else coming forward. May I say a special thank you to those of you here in the audience who have come to participate in this public hearing? It is gratifying to see you here and participating in the process. And I especially want to say a special thank you to how respectful you have been to each speaker. All of us hold the important office of citizen. And you have been here tonight to participate, listening to each other, and hopefully becoming even more informed about the, the process. So, thank you very much. I will tell you, we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday of this week, June 18th. Oh, this is the what, this is the 17th? Oh, that's the wrong date. It is Wednesday of this week, and we will be reviewing the budget and we will certainly be taking into consideration the comments that you made tonight. And I would invite you to attend that meeting if you can at all possibly. We do adopt the budget on June 28th, that is a 9:00 AM meeting here in, in the courtroom. I don't think on that day, we're not on that regular schedule, are we? Tell me. Yeah, it's a normal commission meeting. Mayor Burgess, will we have the three-minute comment time? For every commission meeting? So I'm assuming, yes. You will need to check with the mayor's office and, and sign up for that. Is there any other business that needs to come before our committee? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again for being here, we are adjourned.